Well, welcome, everybody, to a very historic event. We're convening the original Calabasas City Council once again. I'm looking forward to a very exciting evening. I've been looking forward to it for a long time. So let me first of all introduce our distinguished panel here from the first Calabasas City Council. We have Karen Foley to my left, Marvin Lapata, and to my right Dennis Washburn and Bob Hill. The fifth member of the original city council passed away in 2006, Leslie Devine. I'm sure knowing her that she would have a lot to say up here. So if she were around, she would be up here, I assure you. So anyways, let me tell you a little bit about what we're going to do tonight. I have some questions for the panelists. They're going to talk about the early years of cityhood and their experiences founding the city of Calabasas and establishing the infrastructure of our government. And then we're going to take questions from the audience. So when I'm done with my questions, well, if you have questions, there's a microphone over there. And then we'll have a little reception afterwards with some refreshments. And we also can take pictures, you know, if you'd like to take pictures with these distinguished people.
We have questions from the audience?
Yeah, we're going to have questions from the audience.
No hostile questions.
No hostile questions. So I'm going to start right off because we do have a limited amount of time. And let me ask our panel. The city of Calabasas was formally incorporated on April 5th, 1991. What were some of the main factors that motivated local citizens to seek independence from Los Angeles County? Who would like to answer that question?
We were an area that was starting to develop and a lot of developments, and it was hard to control. The control really was in the hands of some of the homeowners' associations. And it was difficult to get -- we're 22 miles from the center of Los Angeles, so the hearings were held down there. And a lot of people could not make the hearings. It was hard to gather a really meaningful group of people down there. And so we understood that, and that was one of the motivating forces. And probably the other big one was, we wanted that budget back so we could control our own destiny and have the funds to do, hire attorneys and do things that would benefit a city like our own.
Anyone else?
Yeah. In my original campaign, I said that the county was destroying our environment. They were plowing down the hills. They were putting the natural creeks into culverts. They were tearing down oak trees. And the council, the cityhood committee, of which the five of us were only, I think there were like 28 people on that committee. That was what our objective was, was to stop what the county was doing.
The community that Carol and I moved into in 1971 was just getting started in preparing for tonight's session. In fact, I went through a lot of my garage, which is where all the history is. And I realized that, you know, so much of what happened to the city of Calabasas environment, that is, the place, the boundaries, you know, was being controlled by the city of Los Angeles, by the special districts, including the water district and the school district, and the county of Los Angeles. Had we not incorporated, we would have seen a four-lane median strip highway from Gelson's to Leo Correo Beach, if you know what I'm talking about, in the geography. And all of the hills, not just some of the hills, and many of the oaks would have been gone. And it would have been done on our dime, which is really terrible. So I think the motivating factor for the four of us, the five of us actually, because James joined us early on, and we were still making inroads on getting our money back, you know, getting our funds for library services or for planning services or...
Parks.
Parks and recreation. We had three acres of parkland, and it was a sheriff's substation. It wasn't even a park. And now we have, you know, probably 250 acres of parkland and public serving. And 43% of the boundaries that you'll see over there in our city are actually in public space, open space, or public-serving use. So the goal of the bunch of us as we were fighting our way through cityhood, and that was twice. We had to try twice, you know, from 1985 to 88, we got killed. And then from 89 to 91, as Calabasas, you know, we finally succeeded. Our neighboring cities on the 101 corridor and in Malibu, and we have literally taken back the right of the people of this community and their money, and it's being used for us. We couldn't have built this place without it and you.
In modern times, the process of incorporating a city has become quite difficult. Why is that? Could you outline the steps that were taken from beginning to end in order to achieve Calabasas cityhood?
Well, the county did not want us to leave, obviously, because we were a fairly wealthy community, and we were contributing a lot of money to downtown for them to spread over every place else. And we are the last city in Los Angeles County to incorporate because of that. And they went and they got a state statute that almost prevents any city from, any area from incorporating today because you have to pay back the money that you take out of them, out of the county. I mean, it was our, yes, revenue neutral. So the money that actually belonged to us, that we got because it was our money, now you have to pay that money back. So it makes it almost impossible for any community to incorporate.
Everything you said, we all agree with, I'm sure. And then there were also side things that went on. In the beginning, we made a, we had a very aggressive attorney. His name was Ed, was it Ed Dilks?
Yes.
And so he was, when we went to LAFCO, we challenged a lot of things. Most of us came from homeowners' associations, and while we had some political savvy, we didn't know the players downtown. So we challenged them. I know, we challenged the, we were the same size as Agura, and they had a police in the budget. They put a budget together for us as we proceeded. This is what your budget's going to be like. And so Agura's, for the same amount of police protection, fire protection, police protection, they added another 50%. And so we challenged them, and we said, we went down to the sheriff's station, and they gave us these figures. And so we did a little bit of embarrassment to them. It wasn't, you don't do that when you're trying to hold hands and get things done. So they dinged us on the first round, and then anybody else wants to pick it up?
Yes. Let's not overlook the fact that even though we were all novices as far as big political office and big political maneuvers, we were all experienced and very well organized and did things smart. We divided and conquered. Each person had a special person on the LAFCO committee that they became close with, became confidants with. Everyone had their role. We all went and gathered buses or car pools for all the meetings downtown. We had citizens going with us, different citizens, more and more citizens. I had Antonovich at a PFC meeting of the Calabasas High School group and made sure everyone had questions, not to ask, but to challenge. And it ended up that his aide once said to somebody who helped me, "Oh, I know Karen Foley. She doesn't like Mike." Nobody ended up liking anybody when they found out what was happening to the citizenry. They were up in arms.
I wanted to interject. LAFCO, because we keep using these terms, is Local Agency Formation Commission. It's an administrative agency within the county that governs whether or not cities get to secede or incorporate or annex or detach or things like that.
We refused to give up. It was our second, our last, our best, and probably our last attempt. We had some wonderful, wonderful help and support by the press.
Well, you need to add that we also sued the county after we, they kicked us out the first time because they said that we were not generating enough income to support a city. As Bob said, they hyped up everything in this budget, and we went through, the four of us, the five of us, went through this list, this budget, and we really rewrote the budget. And with the help of this attorney that was a cityhood attorney, he was not the city attorney.
That budget was the only thing I couldn't find in my garage. It's there.
I'm sure it is, Dennis.
I literally wrote it out on a big...
I would put money on it that it's there.
It's a giant flip chart.
What is it in your garage?
Well, and here's the thing.
I'm really glad that Carol moved it out of the bedroom into the garage.
Well, let's move to the election.
Let me just finish, because the context of where we were in 1985 through 91, we were in a class of cities in 1985, Diamond Bar, Santa Clarita, and West Hollywood and Calabasas. All four were going through the Local Agency Formation Commission process, which is really an enlightened California law that allows locals to incorporate and have smaller units, more responsive units of self-government at the local level, if you can figure out how to get the people organized to do that, which is what we ultimately did. But, and we started earlier with our dear friend, you know, Dick Colostian, and also Steve Soroyan, and others in the community when we were trying to incorporate the entire region like Santa Clarita did. When Santa Clarita incorporated, they were 44 square miles. And when we incorporated, we were 11. Agura Hills was like eight, and Westlake Village was like, oh, not even five square miles. And, you know, Santa Clarita, 44 square miles, they're now 100 square miles with annexations.
With incorporation.
Yeah. And they were all incorporated. West Hollywood, very successful city. Diamond Bar, very successful city. And Santa Clarita, hugely successful. And right in Mike Antonovich's backyard on top of it all. And luckily, we got a new supervisor out here that actually helped us a little bit after Mike Antonovich went up to, you know, Antelope Valley to, you know, to rule the roost up there.
Who was Edelman?
And Ed Edelman was our supervisor, and then ultimately, he retired and, you know...
He gave us our tennis and swim center.
That's right. You never cared.
Yes.
There was a little foreign intrigue in this matter that led us to, almost, that led us to be canceled, actually, the first time. They found a way to, our budget was short of wildfire protection. And so they claimed in the second part. But as we went through these, switching from our first attorney, Ed Dilks, to the cancellation, or, you know, they put us on hold for a while without prejudice. Marvin was given the responsibility of, and I joined him for lunch, to make sure we held hands with Ruth Benel, who was the head of LAFCO. She was the chief executive officer.
Love her.
And so we went to lunch, and I remember the first time, and she said, I don't remember the exact words.
Get rid of things.
You guys were too aggressive, and you needed to switch attorneys. That, you know, you can't go through the process and embarrass the people sitting on the stage up there. So we went and got, who do you suggest? It's Casey Boes, right? He became our first city attorney. And so when we went through the hearings, like everybody said, there's no incentive for the county of Los Angeles to create a new city because that money flows out. And you know all the problems that are downtown in the county of Los Angeles, they need every dime, even more so now than they, that they can get.
Don't forget Ed Davis.
Well, Ed Davis...
Ed Davis got two laws passed that held their feet to the fire. We didn't have to be the bad guys anymore.
So in the final stages, after we were, we started our hearing the second time, Pete Shabaram, who was a really, really good friend of the guy who created the Oaks.
Jim Baldwin.
Jim Baldwin.
Village property.
He said, "This is going to be a financial disaster." And the guy who came to our defense saying, "I don't understand that. Give me the figures," was Ed Edelman. Ed Edelman was a champion for us in the last stages. He was fabulous. He made all the arguments. And, you know, if you don't know the background, Pete Shabaram, he was, he was a football player with Jackie Jensen at the University of California, who was an All-American. He was a really gruff guy. And Edelman shut him down real big.
He played too much football with a leather helmet.
Yeah. And so there's another side to this. He, in part, was trying to protect Baldwin, who did the Oaks, because he had a plan to do 2,200 houses up there instead of the 550 he did. And so there was, there was action behind the scenes.
Well, they had a plan, and they approved it, right? A few weeks before the city vote.
Yeah.
And made us live with it.
And later Baldwin went into bankruptcy, which allowed us to revisit it and turn it into a quarter of what it was going to be.
So, oh, go ahead.
And so Baldwin used to regularly take Shabaram fishing in the Caribbean. So probably just a coincidence that...
And Tabo.
Just a coincidence that Shabaram would go to his defense on, to pay for the trips he was in. That's overdone, but, you know, it's, that's not just a coincidence that he was...
It was a threesome. It was Baldwin, the Baldwin boys, it was Shabaram, and it was the Public Works Director.
Tiedmanson.
Tom Tiedmanson of Los Angeles County.
Who wanted to take Calabasas Road through, onto Malibu Canyon.
Well, I certainly hope none of those people are going to watch this show, because we might hear from, actually, we're not going to hear from a couple of them.
Shabaram is dead.
I don't know. Is Shabaram still around?
No.
Dead.
All right. Our residents voted overwhelmingly in favor of incorporation. But once Calabasas was founded, what next? In other words, how did you set up the infrastructure of a municipal government here?
I'll never forget Dennis. We won, and then Dennis looks around and says, "But we don't even have a pencil. What are we going to do? We have no pencil. We have no meeting place. We have no city hall. We have no employees. We have no money at the moment. What do we do?" So we figured, "We'll meet. We'll have a meeting." So every week on Saturday mornings, we met at Bob's house. Every Wednesday night, we met at my house. And from nothing, we somehow, five novices, found a temporary city manager. Within three months, we had a summer recreation program.
Some of them started pouring in. Didn't we get some early money?
Early money started coming in. We found a rent, we found a place to lease on Calabasas Road.
No, we were first here over...
Calabasas Square.
Calabasas Square.
Is that where it's called?
The first city hall, the first two weeks, was in my office.
That's right. And then we moved to a Dinnifith building.
It was in my office, and the first pencil that the city used...
Did you charge rent, Marvin?
Pardon me?
Did you charge rent?
You better believe it. And the first pencil that the city owned was my pencil.
Did you clear the income on the rent?
And then we moved over here, and we had a small office over here while we negotiated over there.
It was in Dinnifith's building.
Yes, it was.
Yeah, Dinnifith's building.
We didn't rest a minute.
Not for a second.
Well, Karen made it, makes it sound real simple that we met on a Saturday. We met the first...
For hours.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. We probably met every night for the first month.
Yeah, we did.
You were sworn in in someone's living room, weren't you?
Yes, until 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning.
But the best thing we ever did was to listen to the advice of the guy that we selected. Bob and I interviewed Ed Kreins.
Oh, an excellent interim city manager.
Ed Kreins, he was 10 years, or 11 years, the chief of police of Beverly Hills.
He knew the ropes.
He was 10 years, almost 11, as city manager. And they were paying him like, you know, $14,000 a month. And, you know, they drummed him out of the corps. They actually made him the scapegoat for Beverly Hills when their civic center and library complex was $55 million over budget and late. So they threw Ed out. Well, we jumped on that, and we hired Ed for six grand a month. And the first thing he did, the first thing he did was to actually get Dick Colostian to swear us in on March 7th, the day after the election, and enable him to actually fly to Sacramento and get our state subvention money and our property tax share, even though it was a paltry 3.4% of the property tax that the people were paying out here. But that 3.4% was almost, what, $750,000? And then the state subvention was another $346,000.
So we had a budget.
Within, I mean, literally, within a week, we had over $1 million in the bank, and he could get a place and pay Marvin's bill and buy a pencil.
He gave the pencil back, Dennis.
And, you know, here's a cruel irony. Los Angeles County decided after Malibu incorporated to not certify their elections. So they had been incorporated officially by their election like nine months before us, but they weren't certified until a week before we became a city. So, and they sent...
The county kept the money.
They kept the money for the property taxes and the state subventions. They didn't have the, I guess, the experience that Ed had. So we were a million one, a million two ahead of the game, and Malibu waited another almost 12 months, 14 months to get their money.
God, I remember that.
It was such a strange thing. And once we all started sharing the stories amongst Agura Hills and Westlake Village and Malibu and Diamond Bar and Santa Clarita, we realized, man, we got to make sure we strike fast and hot on this stuff, and let's get all the money we can and stick it in the bank. This is what we've done ever since.
We're very well-funded a few weeks into the incorporation because of what you said.
Never had a problem.
No.
Well, let me ask you now. The first election for city council took place on March 5th of 1991, concurrently with the incorporation vote. What was it like to campaign in that first-ever Calabasas municipal election? And how would you say it compares to our more recent elections?
It was more one-on-one. We weren't as malicious as the campaigning is today.
We weren't? I don't know about that, Karen.
There were a couple of, two or three really nasty, bad actors.
Peasant company excluded, yeah, right.
Of course. But generally, we were people who came and were known within various communities. Many of us walked the streets, got to ask the questions. Instead of telling them what we're going to do and how great it would be and how we could make it, we listened to what they wanted and how they would like to go about it and what it would mean to them if we became a city. Our mailers, we, some of us did send out individual mailers, our committee. A lot of the mailers came from civic groups, came from Democratic clubs, Republican clubs, League of Conservation voters, National Association of Women, I forget the exact name of it, came from supporters of cityhood, recommending usually the five of us. Fortunately.
Well, tell them, wait a minute, tell them how many were on the original ballot?
Thirteen of us were on the ballot. And we, there wasn't a week that went by that someone didn't hold either a political coffee or a general meeting to have us talk. And again, I think the five of us asked more questions than any of the other people. They were busy. We knew everybody else's speech.
And the other side of it, the five of us, including Leslie.
Right.
We were all friends of some kind, so we were never tugging at, you don't want to vote for him or her because this is the weak point.
Never. There was not a negative word that any of us said about any other candidate or negated anybody else's position. If we didn't agree with them, if we didn't agree with a citizen, we asked how they would handle it, what they would want. Sometimes when you listen to somebody and hear them out, they respect you, and they may still vote for you even if they may not agree with you on everything. And I heard from many people, well, these are the candidates, number one, that have listened to us. Number two, they're the candidates who have worked in the city for all these years. They're not carpetbaggers. Every one of us had been...
Well, we were all on the cityhood committee. Many of the others were not on the cityhood committee. And the cityhood committee met, what, for two, three years?
Yeah.
For two, three years. I mean, so the five of us were really...
We had name recognition as community activists, not as someone who wanted to be on the council, but someone who was continuing their public service on a council position.
There were a couple of names on there that, when they, when they put their names on, we looked at each other and we said, "Who is this? We don't even know this person."
Tell me who they are, and I'll tell you their speech.
So we all came from homeowners' association. Every one of us at one time was president of our homeowners' association.
And public service groups, and community groups, and service clubs.
So you were president of Calabasas, and you passed the Calabasas?
And Vista Point.
And Vista Point.
And I was on every committee, every women's group, every service committee, in the whole, every PFC in the district.
One of the assignments for all of us, you know, all 13 of those candidates, you know, should have been advocates for incorporation. It wasn't a sure thing. You know, we were determining in that election on March 6th as to whether we should be a city. We didn't know we were going to get, what, nine?
And also to elect the council at the same time.
Well, that was the deal. But, you know, we were...
So we were not a city and then a council.
The cityhood committee folks, including us, were the ones who were out there selling the idea of cityhood. You had to overcome, you know, are my taxes going to go up? You know, am I going to have to send my kids to a different school district? Or, I mean, there were just lots of folly. And almost every one of the answers that we had was a benefit because it's more money, more control, it's more sensitivity to the environment, the scenic wonders of the community and all of this stuff. And how about friendliness amongst the folks who ultimately, the voters wisely elected.
So, you know, Karen, I agree with what you said. It's a lot less one-on-one, you know, interaction with residents in the more recent elections.
That's true.
Maybe that's because of the internet and because of other things, but...
No, it's because of, why are you, why do you want to be on the council? We wanted to represent others just want to serve.
I think the tone that we focused under, or we evolved under, generally was softer than the whole place, the whole political environment now.
Well, we weren't, we didn't know.
We didn't, yeah, we didn't know.
We were, you know...
We were on a mission. We had to get the city, and whoever got elected, we're still going to be better off. And ultimately, the folks who worked the hardest on the incorporation drive in the first place, and they're all up on that sign over there, right? You know, because they all signed on April 5th at Calabasas High School. Everybody who was on the incorporation committee, everybody who ran for office for that matter, you know, they're on that signature page over there.
Plus, I told everyone, what you must do is vote. And even if you truly feel that you don't want the city, hedge your bets.
Yeah, really.
In case we became a city, pick five people you would place your trust in. If you vote no, make sure you still vote for five people, because in case we become a city, you want to be well-represented.
Yeah, a couple of people, remember they ran?
I should know this, but I don't. 91% voted for cityhood. What was the turnout? Do you have...
It was a little bit over 50%.
It's 52%.
Highest turnout we've had.
It was the biggest turnout we ever had. Right.
Although we're going to have higher ones now because our elections will be in November of even years.
Well, we hope so.
Yeah.
All right, so let's move to beyond the election. What was it like to serve on the first city council? What were the council meetings like? And what are some of your fondest memories of that service? And be kind.
Better than honest.
Well, I would like to start with that. Our meetings started, I think, at maybe 6:00 or 6:30. Every other Wednesday was the original, pardon me?
You're going to tell me how late they went, right?
Well, wait a minute, wait a minute. They were some, it was set up that we would meet every other Wednesday. But probably for the first year, not only did we meet every Wednesday, but we probably met every Tuesday and Thursday. And as I said, the meetings were scheduled to start at 6:00 in the evening. And they most often ran until 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning.
And then the telephone calls to people with whom you might have disagreed with on the dais for another few hours.
What?
I would have phone calls after every city council meeting with people with whom I may have disagreed, so that we could iron things out and not have a problem. Some people found it very difficult or didn't have the experience learning how to build consensus or to how to go along with. I mean, there's many a wise politician who's lost a vote, but because of an attitude is able to squeeze a few of his favorite programs into a measure or two to get what he really wanted in the long run. And that was a hard lesson for many people to learn on the council.
I don't think it was a lesson lost that they now had five people who were in charge, and a city manager, and staff ultimately, that were in charge of this place. And you could get them on the phone or run them, run into them at the market or talk to them in the real estate field or, you know, in any of the sectors of the economy here in Calabasas. If you had a complaint under the county, you had to go down, if you could even get an appointment, to the Hall of Administration at, you know, 500 Temple Avenue downtown Los Angeles. Good luck in trying to get anybody to answer your phone. And the fact is that you and all of us answered phones and talked with people and had... And the fact is that you and all of us answered phones and talked with people and had special meetings. We didn't have a planning commission either. So for our first year and a half, we were planning.
Karen and I approved every building that came in.
It's true.
We made a pledge to the industry that we would, Malibu, they closed down everything. They said they will not approve anything.
They're going to have a moratorium on all buildings.
They put a moratorium on all construction for, I don't remember, probably a year or so.
At least a year.
And we pledged that that would not happen here. And Karen and I, aside from the 2:00 AM in the morning, we'd meet several times in the afternoon to approve whatever plans, you know, if, whatever it was, if someone was, you know, changing...
Well, you'd recommend approval to the council.
They were building a patio or they were building a house or whatever was going on, Karen and I sat down and we hashed it out with the city manager.
You want a patio cover? Call Karen.
On TV.
The other thing that happened very early, our first city manager was, I want to say Casey Voest, but that was our...
Chuck Kate.
Charlie Kate, Chuck Kate. He was an experienced city manager and he made some great hires early, many of whom are still with the city. And so we got kicked off and running really effectively, people who could make decisions in slots in the city that had to be dealt with. And so we got, I wouldn't, well, we interviewed, I forget, we probably interviewed five people and he was definitely the winner. And we got...
Cryns found him. That was great. You liked Dennis?
Ed Cryns found the five finalists, including Chuck Kate.
They were all excellent, but we all, remember, we were set to meet the whole night. And I said, let's take a straw poll.
Yeah.
And we all straw polled and voted for Chuck Kate and I said...
All five of us.
Let's adjourn.
That's over.
You know who wanted to keep it up the whole night, talk about it anyway. But we were all in accord with all of his hires, they were wonderful.
So let's turn to the first couple of years and the issues. What were some of the major contentious issues facing the city council during Calabasas' early years?
Rampant county-approved development. It was awful. But they weren't just doing it to us, they were taking everybody apart. And it's still happening, if you just saw in the papers, you know, two weeks ago, New Holland Farming is going to build 21,500 houses, you know, right near Magic Mountain. And that's been stalled since we incorporated, interestingly enough. So that's, you know...
That's sloppy record kept. Sloppy, bad records that we never got or they were erroneous or misled or there were no proper inspections, no proper permits. I've had it many a time.
Even the money that belonged to us, if we didn't dig for it, if we didn't...
All disappeared.
Well, how about the Quimby funds?
Well, that's specific.
The state, again, has, I would call them relatively enlightened, you know, programs, one of which is, you know, underwriting parks and making sure that if development occurs that, you know, that a portion of that development economic enterprise is going to help build, pay for acquiring land and improving parkland or setting land aside for parks of the future. And Los Angeles County could not find our Quimby funds from all the development that ever occurred out here.
Because it was all rolled into the county.
County records.
And they didn't, they didn't pull it out and say, well, this will belong to that
community. It was all one fund.
Plus, they kept changing addresses, changing offices, and they lost files during every move. And then they went to a different system all the time. Became microfiche and lost that.
And they had one inspector out here for the whole region, not just us. A guy named Brown. Remember him?
I've asked each of you to bring some physical object or exhibit of significance connected to Calabasas' history. Could you show us what you brought tonight and explain its importance? You brought, how many did you bring, Dennis? Like, I kept seeing you come in and out, this is like your decor here.
The walls are covered with stuff that I have...
So we'll start with you.
Preserve.
But you're not going to be able to go through everything.
Well, Christmas is coming.
Remember that we didn't have a pencil on April 5th. You know, we were...
Oh, no, not all the pencils there.
We were, we were set up, you know, in order to obtain a pencil, but we couldn't act until the 5th of April. So the 5th of April, we assembled with, you know, almost 500 of our friends and neighbors in the multipurpose room at Calabasas High School. And among the dignitaries that came were the previously incorporated city councils, one of which was Agoura Hills. They brought us a fabulous oak tree, a big boxed oak. And it was literally, it was hauled into the multipurpose room at Calabasas High.
Our first ordinance.
And our first ordinance was oak tree protection that night. And we passed an ordinance. And then our scenic corridors also passed that night, you know.
Did you bring the oak tree here?
Where are the objects?
Well, the Water District brought us a beautifully framed and photographed aerial photograph with a nice plaque congratulating us on our incorporation and promoting partnership with the Water District as well. So the tree is planted, you know, out in front of our old city hall on Moreau Road and Las Virginas, and it's growing just fine. We even had to prune the darn thing in order to, you know, have a view of the street and the parking lot. Another whole story. But there's so many stories that if you want to get this gang, you know, together, you know, for another semester of discussion, there's really interesting stories about self-government.
Don't get too excited.
Yeah, you're not going to do that.
All right. Bob, did you bring something, Bob?
Me, I brought me.
You brought you.
The oldest, one of the oldest relics.
I'm the oldest relic here. No, I looked in the files and I'm not a collector of stuff. I have a lot of papers, but I don't have...
You have been very generous, I should note, in giving me and the city a bunch of things from the past. So I, we appreciate, some of it wound up in our museum.
And his garage is emptier than mine.
By a long way.
Including, I was going to bring one, the first election ballot.
Yeah.
So Dennis, do you have something else?
I just wanted to say that the Viva Calabasas Look to the Horizon, April 5th, 1991, that was hand painted on a roll of brown paper and strung out... By me. And strung out on the stage so that after our first council meeting, everybody who wanted to could sign the thing, which was kind of fun.
Dennis was very, very clever in going back a few about the elections. He was, Dennis was in advertising, so he had an advantage over the rest of us. And he would stand there and say something at the end of what he was saying, he would roll out this, similar to this, and went all the way across the room saying whatever he wanted to say. And Dennis, I actually forgot about that until I saw this thing.
Oh, I remember it.
I had forgotten about it.
Yeah.
And here are some of the things I stand for.
Thank you, James, for making it all happen, right?
James?
So Marvin, did you bring something?
I brought the map at the far left. This is the original proposed city.
Boundaries, yeah.
Yeah, the boundaries of the...
I love that map, that's a really nice map.
A great portion of it was taken out by LAFCO. We took out, if you look at this map, if you can see it, above, there's a straight, a line that goes this way, that represents the freeway. And north of that, it was a development, what is it, Dennis?
Mountain View Estates.
Mountain View Estates. And the developer came to the cityhood committee and said, please take us out and let the citizens of that community decide after they're in there. And like dummies, we said, okay, we let it out. In the meantime, here it is, what, 26 and a half, 27 years later, and they're still bickering about coming in. But they sure love their address being Calabasas and using all of Calabasas facilities because that's the law. Anyway, and on the other side, that was, that we did not include, has been incorporated into the city. It's an interesting map. Karen? So tell me if I'm wrong, I think there was a proposal by that community that was annexed themselves out. We'll do it if you pick up all of our homeowners fees. Oh, yeah, they wanted us to take over, I was off the council by then.
That was Mountain View Estates.
Yeah. If we took over their open space, if the city would pay for their open space, but I was off the council by then. I would have said yes. No.
No.
I brought a sign, one of our original signs of Calabasas. All of the signs in Calabasas were the heavy, heavy metal, like it weighs more than I do, were...
Is it the street sign?
Were blue and white, it's street signs. So one of the, early on, we had, the Friends of the Library had a booth at the farmer's market, mainly to publicize our new city informational, became a depository for used books, which we would sell to raise money for the library and for the Friends of the Library. Then the city decided, well, they replaced all of the signs, the metal signs, they were getting old, dangerous to stand under one anyway. And with the signs you see today, heavy plastic or plastic type of material, I don't know the material, in green and white, the city signs. So I asked the city manager, with the support of the council, to let me have all of the old signs and to deliver them to the farmer's market on Saturday. And I would sell them and raise money for the library. Well, everyone thought I was the Mad Hatter.
Well, you didn't have a hat on, I guess.
I did have a hat on. But they were an enormous success. I would be getting phone calls. A girl, a woman, a friend of mine, Ellen Allegra, Bill Pauley's wife, was, her last name was Allegra, they lived on Park Allegra, raised her children on Park Allegra, she called me and said, set aside the two Allegra signs for me. I got calls from everybody else, I myself paid, made sure I paid, for two Park Mirasol streets, one for each of my kids, of course, they're still in my garage.
I have the Calipatria sign.
I have the Addisville.
I'd got, but they were $10 maybe for a simple street sign or more if there was an auction between families. But anything that said Parkway, Calabasas as an example, or Old Topanga Road or Calabasas Road, they brought $25, $50 sometimes. We made an enormous amount of money, number one.
That's how we built this library, isn't it?
Plus, look at what we saved a landfill for keeping for maternity. Now instead they're dividing everybody's garage.
Karen, it was a brilliant idea. And what it set off was the replacement campaign and Robert Yalda, who was Director of Public, actually Transportation and Traffic Management at the time, now our Director of Public Works, and he's been here 22 years now, something like that, again, a long time. After we decided that we were going to have, you know, a brand, which is the Calabasas, you know, logo, you're going to talk about that in a bit, Robert went to the NHTSA and got a grant to replace every sign in the city, and it was like a million bucks.
Along with the plate, with the addresses on it.
And it has the Calabasas logo in it, it has the numbers, and it's highly reflective. And all the signs that had been here under the county administration, you couldn't see at night because we didn't have streetlights in many parts of the community, by desire, actually. But at the same time, if there were an emergency vehicle or something like that and they needed to see what streets they're on, hit it with a spotlight, these things would light up like the day, you know. So they're highly reflective signs and they were paid for by the federal government.
I got a couple more questions and then we're going to turn to the audience. But you reminded me of something that I think is important, I was going to take it out. The name Calabasas, obviously when you have to choose a name to present to the local agency of formation commission, how did you guys choose that name? And I know it was kind of a place name here before, but, and also the city seal, tell us about those two things.
We didn't choose it. The cityhood or the incorporation committee went with the flow. You know, this was, you know, probably for over 100 years, known as the region of Calabasas because the...
Historically.
Well, the hillsides and the valleys were covered with a native squash. And the Spanish and, you know, the Indians or Native American folks, indigenous peoples, you know, they would identify this place as the location where these things that look like pumpkins, you know, would grow. And they were squashes and gourds when they dried out, but they would turn from green and yellow to orange and green, you know, when they're ripe. And I think they were even a foodstuffs for some folks, but acorns came off of the oak trees and that made acorn meal for the native population and the Calabasas, the Spanish called them that.
I remember the little discussion over the logo in the early city council years, just as a resident. And I remember the other, obviously pumpkin came up as a possible logo, and there was a hanging tree that used to be the Chamber logo that I think was bandied about a little bit. So tell me how you guys settled on the red-tailed hawk flying over the Santa Monica...
Dennis twisted our arms.
I would tell you that, you know, the oak tree with the El Camino Real Bell in Old Town was used, or at least emblematically by the Chamber of Commerce. It isn't, even though it was the last of the Old West, it was kind of foreboding if you think about the fact that you're being greeted with a hanging tree as your logo for your Chamber of Commerce.
Too busy anyway.
Pardon?
Busy, not, it's too much for a logo.
Well, that's another part of it, too. But in the end, you know, we had a professional organization, the Ballard Company, they actually lived in Montanito and operated their office there, develop not just, not just the logo, but a graphic standards manual, literally. And, you know, when they came up with the red-tailed hawk, which was, you know, obviously two colors, because it was, we were money conscious here, that's a one-color printing job, green. And the rest is white because it's reversed out. And several of us had, you know, some sense of graphic, I guess, design and convinced the whole bunch of us that we should be as professional as we could with our design. We wanted to make sure that it was reproducible in newspaper advertising or on our literature or street signs like you just showed, and, you know, so many other things, so...
Very classic.
Well, I think the name, when we were a cityhood committee, it was the Calabasas Cityhood Committee. So when we became a city, there was no question, what is the name going to be? It was, I mean, it was well-established early, early on in the process and...
Because I do remember in the 70s, you know, well, I don't, I remember reading about...
Were you about 40s or 50s in the 70s? The youngest council member.
The ranch, city of Rancho Las Virginas was going to be the entire Canejo Valley from Westlake Village to Calabasas.
That's right.
Yes, I read about it, Marvin.
That's right.
Let me shout out, in fact, to Steve and Lily and Saroyan, who were the inspiration for that idea in part. But even before that, you know, this region has always had odds with both LA County and Ventura County because we're north and last of the Old West to LA County, they could care less. When you look at the maps, you'll see that we aren't even on the maps that LA City or LA County, you know, consider. So we wound up taking the experience of Steve Saroyan, who wanted to incorporate Chumash County out of Ventura County southeast and LA County northwest. Problem is, you have to get both of those counties to allow you out. And you want to talk about, you know, reparations, it became really horrible and impractical. So instead of becoming a separate county, Steve had suggested, along with a number of other folks in the region, that we look at incorporating the whole region.
That would have been about the size of Santa Clarita.
44 square miles. It would have been Rancho Las Virginas.
Let me go, I got a couple quick questions and then we'll turn to the audience. So think of your brilliant questions you're going to ask these people while we have them up here all together. So reflecting back, what do you consider to have been your greatest long-term contribution to Calabasas?
Parks and Rec and the cultural arts. The library, we had an orchestra, we had a community theater group.
Film festival.
Those were all pretty much your initiatives, too, as I recall.
Yes, teen court, Jeff, and our city manager, thanks to the support of our city council, we got elected and I said, but what are we going to do for a recreation program this summer? He said, are you joking? And Marvin said, remember Marvin said, but Karen promised the people recreation. And Dennis and Bob said, yes, we should have something. And we had two or three programs that summer. And we had a light show at the Tennyson Swim Center.
Laser, laser lights.
For 4th of July. And we thought nobody would come because they would all go to fireworks, but it was packed.
They mobbed the joint. Yeah, it's great.
And of course, the lakeside races. That was started by my husband, Jim Foley, originally for the Calabasas Park Homeowners Association. Then after cityhood, it was adopted and administered by the city. Now it's a regular annual 4th of July event and aren't in public places, which today is even stronger than ever. We became an overnight community, went from a group of various neighborhoods to one community, and I think it was Parks and Rec.
It didn't hurt to have staff members who formed a band called the City Slickers. And they did country, rock and folk.
I remember that.
Oh, yes.
Our city manager was in that.
When that Chuck Kate was on.
It was city manager, director of, you know, community services, our Parks and Rec, you know, Greg. And then our public works and code enforcement officers were, you know, part... And then our public works and code enforcement officers were, you know, part of the quartet that played.
I'm not sure I envision our current city manager in a band.
Yeah.
I'm not sure. I'll ask him.
But see, that was my whole campaign. I ran on one issue. And everyone said, "You can't run on one issue." But it was the only issue that no one else had experience in.
It was one big issue, though.
And it was a major issue because when we first moved into Calabasas, it was all adults. I didn't see any children. And then the busing started and we...
We have a senior center.
Influx of children.
Yeah.
And they all wanted Parks and Rec in their neighborhood.
And you're still on TV with author's nights.
And I'm still on TV with my author's night, yes.
So give me your, the rest of your contributions.
Well, Karen and I were at a chamber luncheon one afternoon.
Yes.
Our supervisor, Ed Edelman, was sitting between us. And he asked us a question, and it turned out that it came to the swim and tennis center.
Do you remember the exact question?
Tell me.
He said, "Is there any place to play tennis around here?" Marvin and I stopped.
Well, it was in the process of being, going through bankruptcy at the time.
As a private entity.
As a private entity. And the swimming pool was like a cesspool. I mean, it was, it was green.
We got so excited, I couldn't finish lunch.
And so, he said, "When we're finished with lunch, will you show it to me?" And so, we took him over there, and he said, "We need to buy this place." Well, we said, "We have no money." He says, "I will get, I will get you the money."
Best luncheon we ever went to.
You guys might remember when the savings and loan industry was going belly up, and they had this organization to sell off all the properties. I forget what it was called. Dennis, what was it called?
Resolution Trust.
Thank you. See, I knew Dennis would remember.
But it was to dispose all the savings and loan property.
They were selling all the properties off. And of course, the swim and tennis center was in bankruptcy, and it was to be sold off through the resolution trust.
Because the paper, some of the paper that Hal had borrowed was in a savings and loan. That's one of the reasons it was in there.
Hal Kurth, right?
Hal Kurth.
Yeah, the owner.
Hal Kurth was the inventor of the disk drive, so he...
And so...
No figure.
The city council, in closed session, decided what we, our maximum that we could pay for this property. And we figured nobody was going to bid against us. And so I went with Chuck Kate, who was the city manager, and...
We had a limitation, and you said, "Let's go above it."
No, no, no. Wait a minute, wait a minute, Dennis. Who was the attorney again?
Casey Vogt.
Casey Vogt. So three of us went to this thing, and it was...
It was essentially an auction.
The auction was held in Washington, and it was being broadcast via television. And there was this huge television screen over at the, some hotel down near the airport. And low and behold, there's a bidder against us. And we bid what we thought we wanted to pay, and this other, up and up and up. And the final bid was over what we said, what the council approved. And so Chuck said, "I can't raise my hand." I said, "Chuck, you raise your hand fast before I break it. I will get you, I will get you the votes. Now, raise your hand." So he raised his hand, and the other party figured, oh, what they were told was not true. And so they backed off immediately, and that's when we bought it. Turned out that if you paid cash for the property, you got a discount. And that discount brought it below what the council had originally.
So you didn't get in trouble.
We didn't get, I didn't need to get the votes to go over.
We did send you down, though, with Chuck had 10% as an authority if he needed it.
Dennis, Dennis, no. We were at that 10%.
And we still got the property for under $2 million.
That's right.
Which is a steal. It's probably worth about $20 million today.
You can't buy a house on the lake for that anymore.
So I'm shortchanging you guys on your...
The other bidder were two Indian people, who, Indian tennis players who played on the Indian, Davis, on Indian Wimbledon. I forget.
That's right. Anasi was his name, something like that?
No, it was a... Let's not mention names, you know, because I think it'll get a little dicey.
No, 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 I don't. It was the people that were bidding against us. They were pros. They were, they were bidding against us.
So your accomplishment and your accomplishment?
You know, I think...
You want to be remembered for on looking back.
I think that the time that I spent making sure, along with other people, that all of our finances were in order and so forth. And I think if I had to pick a series instead of one thing, I was in on a lot of the interviews where Chuck Kate's conducted. And I think, along with joining him and probably you guys, too, I think we, I got very lucky that I was able to participate and understand how he hired people. And I think a lot of them turned out to be great assets for the city.
Well, I think the council was lucky to have someone with your financial background there in the early years, certainly.
Yeah, but we were...
I mean, it was helpful.
I mean, I wouldn't take any credit for having spectacular balance, but I always joined in and, you know, had something to say. But we really had great staff very early. We had almost no flaws, no flaws.
Dennis?
I think the best thing that I and we did together was to recognize that a city like Calabasas is a municipal corporation. And we ran this place like a business. And we knew, many of us were in business either for ourselves, or with larger companies, or had large clients that, you know, had big budget woes, as well as, you know, big dreams for what their product should be. Well, our product is, frankly, the lifestyle of the community. So that we, right from the beginning, elected, you know, a mayor, a chairman of the board, and a vice mayor or vice chairman of the board of directors.
Who was the first mayor?
I was the first mayor. Well, and that's an interesting bit. Yeah.
I forgot.
A quick sidebar. Yeah, you forgot, I'm sure. Out of the 13 candidates, you know, the top five vote-getters became the council members. And there, we learned by talking to many of these other cities that upon incorporation, like Diamond Bar or Santa Clarita, that the convention was that if there was an obvious top vote-getter, or two, or three, or four, that would set up the sequence of selecting the chairman of the board, or the mayor of the city. So I got the most votes, luckily for me, you know, and that was, Bob was next, Marvin was next, Karen was next, and Leslie, I think, was the fifth?
No, actually, I was the fifth. Leslie was the fourth on the first election. But I got one more vote on the second.
There you go. Well, I think back to the question, which is, why are we as successful?
No, no. I want to know what you, what your legacy, your...
Because we, because we run it like a business.
Yes.
And we put money away every year. We never outspent our income. And low and behold, I mean, if you look at our books now, even though we claim that we have something in the vicinity of 40% or 50% or 60% of our annual budget in reserves, it's a lot more than that if you look at all the other kinds of things that we put together.
The assets.
And we learned that, and my contribution, if I can say, is going out to the other cities. And both of us, James and I, have competed for making contact with the most cities in California and the country. Each of us has a city pin collection that's in the hundreds and framed. And each one of those pins is a symbol of the spirit of that community. And ours, as you've seen, is, you know, a red-tailed hawk flying over.
There's such diversity in California with that.
What's that?
There's such diversity in what makes a city important and what it's known for.
And every one of them has a gift to give you. And our gift to them is, you know, something that we'll have to talk to those 482 cities in California about. But, you know, the gift to us was, we knew how to, you know, get money for a library. We knew how to, you know, exit the county library system and save the money they were stealing from us. Pardon me, but that was the case.
Tried to give us a bad collection?
Yeah, old books.
Old books that nobody wanted.
I would like to thank Dennis, because there's one thing I learned right as we started working with Dennis and with our city manager and our attorney, and I think working with all of you. You don't spend for anything that you don't have on hand. If you don't have the money, you don't make a financial decision to purchase. And you don't pass a law you cannot enforce.
That's a fact.
So along what you're talking about, when it came time to bid for, or to make our presentation for the library grant, which we got, we, one of the things, we made a mistake by not joining. At the first phase, we didn't join together with the school district, so we didn't get it. But we spent, I think, 250 grand or 225 grand for a study to help us get over, to sell ourself for the grant. And we got it the second time.
To get the money for the library.
That was our budget. I think we spent under, a little under 200.
And it was eight and a quarter million bucks.
Yeah.
Yeah. It was a lot of money.
And so we were, we were novices in a sense, but not really, because like the thing you said, we were conscious of the money. When it came time to spend the big money to get big things done, we did things. And so, paid off in spades. We would look at, look at what we got for 8.7 million for the library grant.
Well, the other half of the money that this, because the library building and complex is about 13 million bucks. The money we didn't give to Los Angeles County because we decided to run our own library, you know, we were able to put money into reserves for that. So when the time came to actually pay the bill for this place, that was another 6 million bucks. So we opened this thing up for free, you know, with that library grant and with the money that we didn't have to give to the county because we left the library system. And I think it was Fran Pavly, didn't she pass the law, you know, that allowed cities to withdraw from the...
No, I don't think anybody else did. It was before 2000. Because we withdrew before 2000.
And Gary Hills didn't withdraw.
We were the first.
They're still a county library.
I want to ask one more question, then we'll open up to the audience. And that is, and thank you all for being very patient. I get enraptured in this stuff and time passes. So I know you guys have done this already a little bit tonight, but are there any behind-the-scenes stories that very few people know about that now's the time to just let it go and tell the public?
I don't think I'd like to discuss it with the public.
There are, but I don't think...
I don't want to embarrass anybody.
Are you asking them or us?
No, you.
Or myself.
Well, it could be a nice story. Doesn't have to be, you know...
No, those were an interesting...
This is a nice story. Out of, out of this, we became very good friends.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I got involved because of the proposed Tantera project that abuts my property. And my next-door neighbor said, "Oh, you should call this number." His name is Dennis Washburn. And so I met Dennis Washburn probably maybe 35 years ago. And...
In the '80s.
Huh?
It was in the '80s.
Yeah. And we were on the cityhood committee, and because we were so closely involved putting the city together after it became a city, and the years thereafter, we became fast friends. I mean, we're, you know, when I think of my dear friends, these people sitting on this stage, except for you, James, you're not one of my dear friends. I like you, you're a great guy, but you're not one of my great friends. I mean, I consider these people among my cherished friends.
I do regret not being able to serve on the first city council. That's one thing that you guys have missed you.
I will tell a story about you.
I know, you don't need a story about me.
No. I was, I think, mayor for the second time. It was 1995 when you walked up and said, "I'd like to actually do something for the city of Calabasas."
93.
Was it 93?
Commission.
And the police commission.
Well, okay, well, he came up to me in any case and said, "How do I get involved in all of this? This is really cool. I like what you're doing." This is over at the city hall on the other side of town. And he said, frankly, "I'll do whatever we need to do." But, you know, we had set up a bunch of committees. We didn't have commissions at the time, including a planning commission. So we had, you know, committees for the environment, committees for traffic and transportation, schools and education, a bunch of other stuff. And here was a lawyer, I mean, the guy was, you know, district attorney, deputy district attorney in Los Angeles, and said, "I want to get involved." And I said, "Cool. Come on, do this." And you were responsible for not just serving on the commission, but then you helped us by creating the teen court, along with Karen. And the two of you became friends because of that.
That was 24 years ago.
I know.
It's hard to believe.
Where did you live at that time? Where did you live, in the city? Or did you live...
Malibu Canyon.
Did you?
So, oh, are you getting the embarrassing part?
Well, the only embarrassing part is you're still here.
Oh, okay.
But I brought this picture.
We're still here.
I brought this picture because it is the 25th anniversary.
Oh.
And I think that you were responsible for making sure that we, each of us, got a copy of the picture with us in it. And there are 16 council members that have served here in this, in this community. And I would say, if not great friends, we have become colleagues and professional servants of the public of Calabasas.
Are you saying that I'm not one of your good friends, Dennis?
Just a colleague.
You're at least a colleague.
After I said you're one of my best friends?
He's trying to get a story out of me.
Colleague?
I'm not going to talk about any of the not-so-good relationships, because in the end, everybody, everybody has done their darndest to make this a really great community.
Some of the rough spots were televised, so I think that they're memorialized somewhere. In any event, I want to give an opportunity for the audience, I hope there are questions that you have, because now's your chance.
Who has the most pins?
Who has the most pins, Mayor Dennis? I have, I think, over 400 now of the 482. Not every city has them, but I will kill for pins. I mean, you don't know what I've done to get some of these pins.
I know what he's done to get some of his pins.
Anything criminal?
Actually, well, well, you were there.
Is that a crime? Is petty theft a crime?
It was abandoned.
We were at the League of California Cities meeting in Long Beach or San Diego.
Sacramento or something.
It was either Sacramento, Long Beach, or San Diego. And the League of California Cities, which puts this conference on every year, had a map of California, and everybody was invited to come and stick their pin on the map where their city was.
You've removed all of them?
Well, when the conference was over, the two of us looked at each other, actually, almost at the same time, you know...
It's so grabby.
It's like finding buried gold.
Well, no, what's going to happen to all of that?
It would go to waste, Dennis.
And I said, "I'll go talk with the folks from the league and figure it out." And James is saying, "Don't waste your time." He's over there pulling pins out of the, into the pocket. So, and we've been to numerous city councils, or city halls in California and elsewhere, looking for the recognition of like-minded souls who think that that little logo stands for something for each community. And there's a certain, I guess, covetousness, you know? You want to have a little piece of that, because there's something, as I said earlier, that you can learn from every one of them. And I stopped putting my pins on the framed items at, I think it's 301 or 302, but I've got boxes full of pins.
Yeah, you've got a lot.
So one of these days...
There's 482 cities, I probably have over 400.
Well, I have some from Arizona and Utah, and you have the other...
That I don't have.
Actually shook hands with Mayor Daley and got a pin from him in Chicago.
Do you want to hear something weird? I have promised James Buzagian that if I ever die...
You ever die.
The hat.
If I ever die, to give him my gold hanging tree pin.
Oh, boy.
And my gold gavel with the little diamond. And my gold gavel with the little diamond in it.
Yeah, right. I haven't promised that to anyone.
Goes to James.
Is it in your will?
No, but it's on the air now and it's reported.
That's as good as.
Mr. Brockman?
Yes, you heard some interesting...
Do, do you want to use the microphone?
I think it's portable, you can carry it around.
I think we should thank Michael for all his service to all these years.
Yes, our most faithful attendee.
One of the unsung heroes of our Calabasas city.
The key to all this, and you guys have addressed it all, is the community spirit, the collaboration on the part of the entire community to make this what it is. And the whole place needs some big applause because we all contributed to it. What I wanted to mention was that you've heard a number of the issues that they had to deal with with regard to the county or the city, or the other city, other local governments around. There was an interesting sidebar story about having to deal with the federal government. And I think Marvin can talk about that. We all tried to take our mail for, for, you know, just, it just gets there. When we were incorporated, we had to try and get all of the areas addressed as Calabasas.
Oh, yeah.
We were lack of cooperation from the federal government.
That was probably my biggest thing.
It was under your marriage.
Well...
LA 91364 at the time.
Yeah, we were, the area on the east side was called Woodland Hills.
Because they couldn't sell it in Calabasas.
And what was so interesting about the fact that it was called Woodland Hills, it was originally way back when called Calabasas. And when the developer tried to sell houses in Calabasas, no one wanted to buy them because they were too far out. So, they picked up the name Woodland Hills, which was right next door. And also that zip code, 913...
64.
64. And Michael, thank you for reminding me of that.
That's right.
And so, auto insurance at, was 20% higher in 91364 than it was in 91302. And so, immediately upon our incorporation, we met with the regional postmaster, Ed Kreins and I, in my office when the office, when the city hall was still in my office. I mean, you bring it to my mind. And the, it was a lady, she says, "I will agree to one change and one change only. You will never get another change out here. I will let that go from 91364 to 91302. P.S., our, our auto insurance went down immediately by 20%."
And she was true to her word. We have, still have three zip codes in Calabasas.
No, they didn't change them. They, those were the zip codes that she... She never, she never let 91301 become 91302. It would have been nice if the whole city had 91302, but she would not do that. She would only do this. And we explained why it was important to us. I see... There's folks who live in the west side of town that actually still get their mail to Calabasas Hills because...
Or Agura Hills.
Well...
Sometimes it's called Agura.
Either one, because... That's right. The post box or post office was in Agura Hills and they didn't want to have to retrain the mail force. That's right. So, you know... That's right. Now, Calabasas Hills or Calabasas or Agura Hills or Calabasas. Get your, or Ol Tepanga.
Well, Ol Tepanga has a separate one, 90290.
Right. And all that mail comes to Calabasas.
What I was remembering though, Marvin, and maybe I'm, my memory is not serving me well and you may be, that the only reason the feds cooperated was because they didn't have to change any of the distribution of the mail. Otherwise, you went out a much harder time, same location.
Location, which is now torn down and is going to be an apartment complex.
Any other questions? Yes, Patty?
It's a question, but I just wanted to say, I've only been in Calabasas for 14 years.
Some of the best years.
I did. But I, I immediately loved this community because you could be part of it, you could get active in it, you could talk to the city council, you could, like I used to say, Tony Corrales calls me on the phone all the time.
We won't tell Patty that, so...
Well...
This is on TV and you blew its cover.
Well, I, let me repeat for you because the television audience can't hear what you're saying over there. You were just generally complimenting the city and, and just the small-town nature of Calabasas. We appreciate any compliments we get because we certainly hear a lot of complaints. Not from you, but...
Well, I think that one of the objectives of, of the cityhood was to have a small community. And when we first started with committees, we reached out to the community and we were overwhelmed by the number of people that wanted to participate. That really brings up a very important point. One of the realizations that this incorporation crowd had was that the general plan of Los Angeles County had intended that this community, the boundaries that you see on Marvin's map over there or thereabouts, was to be somewhere between 30 and 36,000 people. We are probably 25,000 now after 26 years of incorporation, which is up from about 17,000 when we incorporated. But every one of those numbers has money attached to it. Our first eight years and then two years more on top of it, we received state subventions based upon the population that this community had by the census. And the census, if you were to believe them, credited us with almost 28,000 population. So, if we had 17,000 people and we got the money for 28,000 people, what kind of a bonus is that?
Because all they did is take the registered voters and multiply it by three.
That's right. That's right, three times our registered voters.
I wanted to recognize Alicia Weintraub, one of our city council members who walked in. Thank you, Alicia, for coming tonight. Do we have other questions? Taryn, did you have a question?
I just want to say something.
Oh, Taryn, could you use the microphone? Because otherwise, the television audience can't hear you.
The mic is right here.
Hi, I'm Taryn Wayne. I'm the president of the Historical Society. And I'm just want to say that I moved here, I've been here almost 18 years. And I was looking for a small, a town like this. I lived on the west side for a long time. I lived in Rancho Santa Fe. But I moved here and I just, it's just such a wonderful community and the people. And I got very involved, had such a passion because I moved into the Bird Streets. And I started, had a vision of starting this trolley car tour. So, it's just been a wonderful experience and I had just, I just think it's a great community. And I just, it's sad too, I guess I have to represent Larry Dinowitz, who's passed away. And I just feel like he's here with us tonight. So, I just want to share that because it was very special for him. And I got to, he was part of my life and...
He was a good friend of the city.
Yeah.
On the incorporation committee.
Yeah, so I just want to share that because it was very important to him and it's just... So, thank you, just thank you, okay?
Rick?
Hi, I'm Rick Young and I just have a quick question. Has Calabasas ever thought about getting our own postal other than, office other than the one over here with our own carriers?
Oh, yes.
Rather than using Woodland Hills?
We actually have just, in the 1970s, when they had the post office, I think it opened in 71 or 72, they have a, it's an annex. It's not a real post office. And we have begged, we have tried to move the location, we have tried to get a full-fledged post office with all the services. They are downsizing.
We said we'd even build a...
We even, we even offered at one point to pay, to supplement. They will not do it.
The postal service is downsizing. If you look around your neighborhood, you remember the thing that was sitting at the curb? It was, came up and it curved over like this and it had a door and you could put your mail in. You remember those? My grandkids will probably never know what those things were. They, they've all disappeared.
Well, they lost, they lost all their revenue to FedEx and things. And so, they, they run several billion dollars a year deficit, even under the...
In new developments, they're not even having individual mailboxes. That's their policy. So, in new developments, if it's not already done, you will have group mailboxes. Mont Calabasas, in fact...
When James becomes president of the United States. He'll change it.
I'll get you your post office. Karen, you want to say something?
Yeah, I want, the thank yous that you give to us, it really should be us thanking you. I mean, all these thousands of people who voted to become a city, took a leap of faith. You know how scary it is to make such a dramatic change? And to put their trust in the five of us was so overwhelming.
That Karen cried.
It certainly was one of the most...
She turned to me and she says, "What are we going to do?"
Humbling, proudest moment of my life. And I know all five of us worked very, very hard to keep that trust. And I certainly hope we never let you down.
How many people here, we're here for the incorporation?
Wow.
Fantastic, really fantastic. That's nice.